Session. It is now 6:30. We will consider the Level Three parent grievance. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board deny the Level Three grievance regarding the student Joseph Woodstock.
There's a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passed. The grievance is denied. Public participation, we have none. Staff reports, Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Ambrose. Well, obviously, we're during the summer months and there are a lot of things that are happening. First of all, we would like to thank all of you for your support during the school year, and we thank you for your support during the summer months. We have the feeding program going along with our students, and that's going along very, very well. We're feeding our kids. We have the summer school going on. We have students in summer school, so I'll ask if Dr. Getwood would do a summary of how summer school is going, along with Dr. Vine. Both of them are involved with the summer school program.
Thank you very much, Dr. Porter. Good evening to President Ambrose and members of the Board of Trustees. We're very pleased to let you know that summer school is off to a great start. When I say off to a great start, it will be ending next week, but we've had a great start, and we have more than 2,000 students participating in the summer school program. Some are there for required work, others are there for HB 4545, which is those students who are in need of tutorials because they were not as successful as we wanted them to be. The state said they should be on the state assessment, so, and we have summer school at every campus. So, students are being taught by teachers who work with them for the most part during the school year. The feeding program, as Dr. Porter said, is going well. Transportation is doing an outstanding job of getting our students to and from school.
That is a great question. Yes, sir. Last summer school is part of our ongoing recovery network. It is a highly collaborative process involving all central office departments, all schools, parents, and of course, as always, it's fully supported by our superintendent and the Board of Trustees. So, on behalf of put authorized these children and their schools, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Getwood, I just want to ask a question in regards to you mentioning the ending of summer school next week. Now, will that subsequently end the feeding program as well? Or?
I'll let Mrs. Jeans speak to that under child nutrition.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, so the-
The feeding program sponsored by the district will be discontinued when summer school is up. That does not mean that there will not be additional feeding opportunities because we have someone locally, Ms. Karan, that actually provides food. She's right, she, right now, she provides food to all of the locations or put off on Fridays when we do not, when we did not have summer school. But after, she'll be feeding in July and August for all of the areas that we are not serving until we are returned for regular school in the fall.
Good, thank you.
Okay, great. Also, we do have our summer rec program that is going very, very well. We're really, really proud of the number of students that are participating in the summer rec at the high school. And this is the athletic portion. We have over 140 football participants there. We have around 70 female athletes that are participating this summer. Our incoming freshman participation is at the highest it's been in the last five years. The first time that we've had baseball players showing up for summer workouts, and that is a great thing. Along with our softball, summer league has about 40-plus young ladies that are participating. And of course, they say it has been very, very hot, so, but they continue to come, so we're really, really happy about that. Before we move on, I'm going to ask and talk about, you know, we have Mr. Greer with us tonight, and I'm going to ask him, you know, Moody's, we have Moody's that have come to us with our ratings. And we've done well. Our rating is high, but there are some things that we need to address, and I'm going to ask Mr. Greer to come and just talk about how all of this transpires. Mr. Greer is tall enough, he can stand behind, he can stand behind, and we can see him, we can see him.
Yeah. Well, good evening. Again, my name is Clarence Greer. I'm with RBC Capital Markets, part of the Minnesota Advisory Team at RBC. And today, I wanted to review with you. I'm typically here when you talk about selling bonds or issuing some form of debt. And when you sell debt, have public debt, you have an obligation for full disclosure of public information, and you talk to the rating agency at least once every year. And this is very common. Every school district process day does that. And so, we just, you know, simply have gotten through with discussions with Moody's, and we wanted to share those comments with the Board, because I think it really sheds light on all the hard work that the team has done, the team of faith with Dr. Porter's vision and the Board's guidance to get us here. Let me first say that all your debt, you've been reading a lot about what's been going on in the market, you know, with inflation, and all your debt is fixed, and it's not moving up or down. We locked it in at historic lows. And I'm very thankful for the timing and the wisdom of the Board to move forward and to sell the bonds. Unfortunately, not everyone is in that situation. So, all your debt is sold. So, this is all, this is all maintenance, like going to the doctor. There's no major event, but this is just, okay, this is a checkup to see how you're doing. And as you might recall, let's look at page three, and just kind of give you a rating, I give you a perspective of what a-
He's right behind.
You know, we talk about credit rating itself. We are rated by two rating agencies, Fitch Rating and Moody's Rating. Give you a moment to get there. And like I said, we had, we just concluded conversations a month, a couple of months ago with Moody's, and you can see that we still are very strong rated at the A2 rating with Moody's. And that's, that's the district's rating. And we qualify for the permanent school fund guarantee, so much of our debt is AAA rated. And so, you know, not all of it, but much of it, so that's how we're, so such a low interest rates. But when we don't secure the permanent school fund guarantee, we sell on your rating, and it's always your underlying rating as well that investors factor in. So, having an A2 rating is very strong, and it was A1 with a negative outlook, but we're happy to report that the negative outlook has been removed. The rating itself is slightly lower, but look at it, it's still a strong investment grade rating, and we'll get into some of the factors that were out of, that Moody's considered, and you'll, you'll come to the conclusion that they're systemic in nature. They had nothing to do with the district. In fact, they're very complimentary of the, what they said, experienced management team and board governance, and I have a copy of the report in the appendix. And so, very, they're very complimentary of it. But certain things that, you know, Moody's recently changed their matrix, and they said, you know, and they started weighting economic, socioeconomic factors. And so, and those factors, you know, in terms of concentration of taxpayers, and obviously have a lot of heavy industry in terms of the concentration of who's paying, you know, the majority of the taxpayers, top 10 taxpayers being the majority, that weighed a little bit more. And so, but, you know, all in all, the district is really in good shape. Let's go to the comments on page one. You can, oh, on page two, you can actually see some of the comments here. When I, we already mentioned the A2, and you saw on the previous page what that means in terms of perspective. So, you saw the framework. The third bullet, look at it, you say proactive and experienced management team has helped general fund reserves remain strong despite historical tax pay volatility and from taxes paid, and we're happy to report, and we did, I think, both your staff members, Denise Davis and her team, and in previous terms, Ms. Jeans, have always communicated that you've worked very diligently on those appeals and put a crafted language in to help moderate those, and that was reflected. And so, that's why we removed the negative rating. So, I know they've worked tirelessly to get those, remove those appeals and have communications, positive communications with your taxpayers, and that has been reflected in it. And so, that's really noted, healthy general fund reserves, strong taxpayer support, and so, all of those are challenges, are things that you are doing. The challenges, what they're saying is the concentration of taxpayers, the fact that Motiva and the beer industry firms are your taxpayers, there's nothing you can do about that, you know, and so, that's just a function of your DNA. Your debt service fund reserves, that's, and so, you know, those are offset by, when you look at what the factors that we, what can we do to, you know, to move forward a roadmap, you know, I think we're on the right path. I think that Denise Davis and her team has charted a course to kind of continue to increase reserves. You have a strong academic program, and with Dr. Porter's leadership, I think the demand and people migrating here, some of the socioeconomic factors that you're moving upon, just we can't, we just can't control. But what, you know, it was a very good thing, and on page four, let me just show you a big reference to the amount of debt you have outstanding, and you can see that we have about $339 million of debt outstanding, and it's all fixed rate. And so, and the majority of it is guaranteed by the state permanent school fund guarantee program, which by virtue makes it AAA rated, and that's always a good thing to have. And notice that we did, not only issued about months' time, we circled back and we did a refinancing, remember, in 2021, in 2020, and to get even lower interest rates. And so, I mean, the district is well positioned moving forward and have the financial flexibility to maintain these strong ratings that I think really led by the leadership of the Board, Dr. Porter, and undergirded with the staff of Denise Davis. I think we're, you're poised for the next chapter, you know, of development, of if you ever want to pursue a issue that, I know that's not in plans, but you are in position to do that. And with interest rates moving higher, the days of refinancing, you see, like, that's temporarily on the sidelines. I think mortgage rates just hit 6%. So, we all can attest that no one's really doing refinances right now. So, but fortunately, with the foresight of Dr. Porter, we've already accomplished that for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Question. So, just for the sake of saying, if something were to occur, you do have the autonomy to go in and renegotiate? That would be in the best interest of the district?
Yes, every, that's a great question. Every year, we have a conversation with both Moody's and Fitch, and, you know, they have, we definitely present the evidence in a very forceful and persuasive manner, led by your staff, Dr. Porter is a part of those. They talk about demand for education, they talked about the academic achievement, and all of that checked out very fine. So, those are the items that we'll continue to be advocates for and make sure that they truly recognize and consider when they factor in, when they're rating us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees?
Thank you, Mr. Greer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as we move forward, when we look at this, this is, this is good, and we're, we're really, really happy for our ratings, and as Mr. Greer said, we're going to continue to move in a strong way and make sure that what we're doing in our district is what we need to do in order to continue with our high ratings, our positive ratings, and that is what we want. And in that, that next vein, Mrs. Davis needs to let us know exactly how we're doing locally with our finances, and that is something we can control.
Thank you, Dr. Porter, and good evening, Board. First, I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity, and also like to thank my team and the executive committee for helping. I have Mr. Steve Malmey with me tonight, and Mrs. Margaret Moreno can be with us, but we wanted to share some budget information with you, some of the things that you would see or that you would have to approve in our annual budget book in August. So, we just want to start out with, on page three, we start out with the budget process. So, just some steps that we go through. We establish the revenue projections. We establish the school allocations based on enrollment and resources, and then we develop budgets based on that for each campus or department. We compile, compile all the departments into one budget, and then we bring that to you, the Board, to approve. On page four, we are showing our budget calendar, just the steps that we've gone through through the fiscal year, and then the, to the end, to where we would adopt the budget at our August board meeting. On page five, it just shows some of the dates of the reports that we have with the Board. Now, each district is required by TEA and by laws to-
Page six.
-to have certain components of our budget. So, we are required to have a balanced budget so that our revenues are sufficient to pay for our current expenditures. And we prepare our budget in accordance with state, federal, and local requirements. And we provide a basis for evaluation of efforts, costs, and accomplishments. Then we have our legal requirements. So, these are the legal requirements at the state level. We comply with Texas Education Code, Section 44002 to 44006, and we have TA requirements, and we have the Financial Accountability Standards Regulations Guide, if I quoted that correctly, we call that FAST Reg, and the Commissioner's Rule. And then, we have to comply with our local board policies. When you look at the state requirements, we're required by the state to have our budget prepared by August 20th. So, I think it's the August 6th, we would come to you with a draft budget, and then we would come back to you at the big board meeting to actually have our budget adopted. We're required to have a public meeting at least 10 days, advertised in the newspaper before the adoption, and the budget is prepared in accordance with GAAP, that's generally accepted accounting principles and state guidelines. And we must legally adopt our budget before the adoption of the tax rate, and usually that's done at the same meeting. Then we have TEA requirements, and there's, some of them overlap, some of them are the same, and some of them are a little bit more restrictive. So, we must adopt our budget by August 31st. We saw that in the state. And then, we adopt, the adoption and amendments to the budget must be recorded in the board minutes. And our official budget must include our general fund, our food service fund, and our debt service fund. So, there are going to be some, a couple pages that we pull out, and it's going to display these funds that y'all have to specifically approve. Our funds are, must be presented. When we present our district budget, we must present it at the fund and function level. And later on, I explain the fund, I'll explain the fund and function to you. And the district must amend the official budget before exceeding a functional category. So, at the end of the year, we do an analysis of each function, and we ensure that we do not go over, that our expenditures are less than our budget. Then we have some local requirements, and then, I just won't read the list to you. So, we get into the general accounting information, and so, we always talk about our account codes and our account code structure. The account code structure is standardized for the state of Texas, and it's in accordance to GAAP, okay? This information is important because it's used by TEA, it's used by our Board, it's used by our auditors, it's used by our tax campuses, and our department, and it can be used by our taxpayers. And we do this standardization because when we are comparing, when you're getting, three districts being compared to another district, since we all use the same account code structure, we're actually comparing apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. So, on page 13, we go and look at our account code structure. Our account code structure is 21 digits. Our first part of the account code is the fund code, the second is the function code, then we have the object, the sub-object, the organization code, the year, the program intent, and then the details. So, I'll go through each section to kind of give you an idea of what it means. The first section is the fund code, is the first three digits of your account number always, and it identifies the type of funding that we have. These codes are determined by TA. There could be some locally defined codes, and then we have to comply with the federal agencies. In the description on this slide, I show some of the most common fund codes that we have in the district. The one that you all have to approve at the August board meeting would be Code 199, which is our general fund, Code 240, which is our child nutrition program, and 599, which is our debt service fund. The second part of the account number is the function code, and this code is going to represent the general operational area. For example, if you see 199 and 11, 11 is instruction strictly in the classroom, 12 is instructional resources, that's our library, 23 is school leadership. We see a lot in 51, which is plant maintenance, that's our maintenance department. Then the third part of the code is our object code. It's usually a four-digit number, and the ones you see the most are the expense side. So, if you see a code that's 6100, it's going to be 61 and two numbers behind. Whenever, if it ever starts with 61, that's a payroll account. 6200 is professional services, that's where we include all of our contracted services. If you see 6300, supplies and materials. 6400 is other operating expenses, and then a 66 is a capital outlay. Then we have the sub-object. These are district-defined, but we use these to further separate out pots of money. For example, we have a whole laundry list of codes to separate out the different sports. So, if we got a request to say, how much have we spent on football? We know football is going to be a sub-object code 13. We can run a report on 13, so we can report it that way. And then, there's some more listed for you to see. Then we have the organization code. Every campus, every department has a different number. If it's a high school, the number would be from 001 to 040. For example, our high school is 009. Then we have a set of codes for our middle school, elementary, and so forth. Then we have a fiscal year code. The fiscal year code is very important when we're looking at our special revenue grants because they are awarded by fiscal year, that's how we keep them separate. And if it's just the general fund, then this code would be 00. Then we have the program intent code, and it identifies a specific set of students. For example, if it's a 21, it's gifted and talented. If it's a 23, it's a special ed code. And we're required by TA to separate these different, specific sets of students because we're ranked or graded on it, because we have to report the expenses by program intent. Our last code of the account code structure is details. This is also a district-defined code. It's usually three numbers or three letters or a combination of both. If it's 000, it's just the general. We have SEC is where we code all of our security accounts for, let's say, PAPD at our schools. So, if we wanted to know how much we spent on PAPD, we can run a report. And we have a common one, SUB is our substitutes, and that's where we code our Kelly Services expenses. So, on page 22, just give you a couple of examples of what this code looks like spelled out. And then we get into our current situation. So, to date, our payroll expenditures, expenditures are under budget, our overall expenditures are in line with the budget, and our total expenditures are offset by the revenues that we receive. I showed you this slide last time, but I just wanted to update you to tell you that we're still slated to receive all that we have projected when it comes to revenues. We projected 72 million. Right now, we're at 63, and we're still waiting on 8 million, which I think we would get, 100% get by Settle Up, which is in August. The next slide shows where the money goes. So, we have already looked at the different categories. So, the big blue piece of the pie with 76% is payroll, and that's where I showed you it was a 6100. So, the bulk of our money goes to payroll. And then, we took that payroll amount, and we further broke that down to functions. So, we see that 58% on page 27 is function 11, that's in the classroom, that's teacher salaries, that's supplies and materials for students, that's all classroom-related expenses. Our next big piece of the pie, I think, is maintenance, which is function 51. So, again, I brought our budget initiatives to you for our next year's budgets. We're still looking at salary increases. We are still waiting to hear back from the insurance company to see if we have any increases there. And our potential decreases is, could be due to what we see or what we think we can save with the rezoning, the teacher-to-student ratios, the reduction in overtime, and then a possible reduction in co-enrollment costs.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. I have one question. Obviously, we know that we're in the middle of a fuel crisis, and gas is going up every day. How are we doing with our fuel costs?
Our fuel cost is doing well. The one thing that saves us is that we haven't filled all of our, plus our vacancies, so we had, I don't want to use the word cushion, but we are within budget.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Vice President, would you?
Yes, Mrs. Davis, we haven't did this in a while. I'd like, is there any way we can get the list of the salaries from the employees of the district for us, and department-wise? Have it separated? We did that once before, when I, a couple of years back, we had all the salaries listed out for the employees of the district. Is there any way we can get that copy now, updated one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll take care of it. What we usually do is give salaries by, we give salaries by, as you said, by departments, not individuals.
Right.
Not by departments, and it is a range. So, we are working on the current salaries. As Mrs. Davis did say, we're looking at trying to give the rates. So, if you would allow us to compare, when we get, when we finish everything, because we're waiting for it. We work through TASB, obviously, we do it by ourselves. So, hopefully, TASB will come through for us at the beginning of July, and then we want to make sure that our values are solid. You know, with everything- And then we want to make sure that our values are solid. You know, with everything, you know, there's this thing where you can go and contest your values, and we've dealt with that for quite some years. But we want to make sure that everything is solid, and then we will move forward with what we're going to do. So we don't want to overstep without knowing. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Also, when we look at, when you talk about finances, we want to thank Dr. Getwood's area and federal funding, title funds, you know, title funds, we use title funds for supplementary, supplementary, and things that we purchase for our students. And we also know that within the, well, forever, we want to engage our students. The last two years, our students have been kind of lax, I'll say, due to COVID, and now we're reinvigorating them, we hope. So there are some tools that we are asking you to purchase through the title funds, and I book a lot of software. And I did share with you the software that we have, that we're going to train our staff members July eleventh through the fifteenth. So we're excited about that. Also, there's some purchases that you all approved a couple of months ago, the interactive panels, which you see in front of you. And I'm going to ask, I guess, Dr. Getwood and Mr. Dagree and Mrs. Jackson are here?
Thank you, Dr. Porter. I'm gonna yield all technology to Mr. Dagree and Mr. Jackson.
Okay. But we're happy. Those panels, if you remember, you approved those for our secondary, and they are here, and they're installing those in the classroom. And then we're asking tonight that you approve for all elementary classes. Now, we've talked about the, how do we use these panels? One thing, we're getting rid of all of our, we call our overhead projectors, and we're hoping with the way that our teachers are not there, we're trying to get as many teachers there as possible. We have some wonderful teachers in our district, and our main goal is to make sure that those teachers are able to share the curriculum. So I'm sure you're familiar when we ask you to help us and support what we've done through Region Five Distance Learning, which cost us a large amount for our Spanish classes. But what we're trying to do is to help with these panels. These panels will help us to do what we will call an in-district-type distance learning, where teachers will be able to share the curriculum in other classrooms, and not just in other classrooms, but in other schools as well. So, and before Mr. Dagree comes, I want to ask Mr. Wyber, we did, we're in the process, and it's going well, that we have some prospects of Spanish teachers that are coming, you know, we don't get those often, so I want to ask Mr. Wyber to just give an overview of what we're doing and where we are with it.
In order to meet our need for Spanish teachers, we've been working with Global Educational Concepts, and they recruit international teachers. And these teachers are a part of a visiting international teacher program. And to date, we have interviewed about fourteen teachers via Zoom from their home countries, Colombia, Honduras, Mexico, and Spain. And as of today, we have extended employment to five of these teachers, and they have accepted. So we're working with this company. We have begun the application process with them, and we're hoping, we're hoping within about six weeks, these Spanish teachers will be with our district.
So we're really, really happy about that. So we're, Mr. Wyber is trying, you know, when we ask teachers from other countries to come, we do what we need to do to help them. Of course, we're looking at where they will live, you know, apartments, we're looking at how we get them here and sustain them, and make sure that they're comfortable, because I think some are from Spain and Colombia. So we need to help them to get settled here. Well, we're looking at ways in which we can help them. Yeah. So, Mr. Dagree, how else can we help our teachers and our students?
Thank you, Dr. Porter, board members, team. These interactive panels are gonna take us to a higher level of instruction and improve the instructional delivery system that our teachers provide to our students. Our research, for a long time, has always proven that hands-on instruction is more effective with our students. And not only would these panels improve instruction, but they're also help as a solution to bridge educational academic gaps, challenges and issues that our students have. One thing that these panels have a clear advantage over our current instructional system, which is overhead projection. Overhead projection is just mainly for guided instruction. So we have teachers that give lecture-type instructions and then give feedback from students. However, these panels are interactive, and with these stands, the stands are almost advanced as the panels, these stands can also convert into table mode. The table mode allows these stands for up to four students to work independently on each stand. The stands are also able to access all of our online software, all of our digital book content, and any assessments and tests and activities and assessments that teachers can give in the classroom. So I imagine that not only could a teacher go from guided instruction, but she could take that guided instruction to a step further and have kids actually come to the unit and work independently in an organized fashion within the classroom.
And with those, with those interactive panels, which we're excited about, we have something else that we're asking you to approve, and that is the loose systems. Now, you know, I've always, Dr. Getwood and I, we volley back and forth from time to time. Sometimes it's serious, sometimes it's not. But most, when we talk, when we volley about elementary and secondary, we're serious. So we want to make sure that all that elementary has everything it needs. So we're asking to show you a video is loose systems, we're asking to tell you about it, and these, I guess, tools will go into the gym, and it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be, we'll have, it'll be something like this in the gym, but he'll show you, he'll tell you, and then he'll show you.
So I'm gonna show you a short video, it's only about a minute long. It's about a minute long, right, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
It's about a minute long. So we were looking at these interactive panels, and you know, being a former art teacher, being a former secondary, you know, elective teacher, the gyms and stuff are always classrooms sometimes that don't get the same technology, because sometime they service a larger amount of students. So you do understand that our elementary coaches in gym, they teach sometimes a larger group. So you can imagine if you had a larger group than your average classroom size, that this may not service the whole thing. So I came up, was at a technology conference and met with Jackson and Dr. Getwood, and it was like, oh, Dagree, what kind of crazy, crazy thing you got now? You sending us to space? No, not yet. But this is a, this is a system that allows the same interactive instruction in a gym, and it takes physical education and combines academics, all our four content areas, and it puts them together. So I'm gonna let the video speak for itself.
Can you imagine our kids doing that in the gyms? All eight.
I need, we need one in the boardroom.
So, and again, this is probably the most innovative technology tools that you could put in a school. And I say this little surprise, not that this is a surprise, but I'm always proud for Port Arthur Independent School District to be innovative when it comes to technology, you know, because we have greater challenges sometimes than some of our neighboring districts. But one thing that I'm very proud of and very excited about, that if this goes through, not only will we be the first school district in Region Five to have this, we'll be the first district in Texas. We'll be the first district in Texas. The software originated in Canada, it then spawned to California and other major states. And school district, inner-city school districts, California saw an increase of up to thirty-six percent on their standardized testing scores by utilizing this not only in the gym, but expanding it to other aspects of the school. So I'm very excited about this technology, and again, some of the most innovative technology that I've ever seen, and I've seen a lot. So this is a very, very innovative, and I'm very excited about this being in our school district.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dagree. And last but not least, with all of that fun, we're gonna open up school this year at the Memorial High School with, you have a question? Okay, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna really just commend you and the whole entire team for bringing this. I mean, talk about innovation, that's definitely gonna take everything to the next level when it comes down to our schools. And I'm glad to say that we have it in our primary schools and secondary schools as well. So one thing I will say that I would love to see is probably some district-wide challenges if we can, when it comes down to some of the designs that we have on it, if we can get some district-wide competition between our middle schools, our elementary schools, when it comes down to the apps that are on there. So keep that in mind.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Trustees and questions, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to commend Dr. Porter and his team, when he and I sat down to do the agenda review, when he was telling me about the presentation tonight, it was just mind-blowing, because after their agenda review, I went back and done my own research and asked some of the physical education teachers about the interactive panels. I said, have you heard about it? They said, not only have you heard about it, but Dr. Porter and the department had had a meeting with them, I think at the beginning of the spring semester. And he said, is this something that you all will use? And then that's what was my main question, that it's something that would be useful and meaningful, and that we're just not just wasteful spending. So I, once again, commend you and look forward to hearing the benefits from this software.
Thank you. I think we can all agree that, well done. Thank you.
And as we get ready for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're going to embark on the first annual Back to School Fun Fest. So that will be sponsored by Valero, Valero Corporation, and we are ecstatic and the Port Arthur Industrial Group. So I'm gonna ask Mrs. Lot to talk about, Mrs. Lot's been working very, very hard. She's taken on more than what they asked, what she thought she was gonna take on. But she does a wonderful job, and she's just, and she's just happy to do it, yeah.
Oh, joy. Valero did come to us with this idea, because they have done Annual Kids Fest in the past at the Carl Parker Center, but they were looking for a new organization to collaborate with, and they did choose the school district, and we thought it would be a good way to kick off the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with a Back to School Fun Festival, especially with, you know, everybody outside, now we going outside. So this is a chance for all of our students and their families to join us at the high school campus on Saturday, July twenty-third, from eleven a.m. to three p.m. And we're going to mainly utilize the outside front entrance way and the common area where the cafeteria is and that main hallway, not venture out much beyond those borders, but still try to offer a lot within those sections. We're going to have free food, which will be Kona Snow Cone Truck, and we're going to have sack lunches that will have hot dogs, chips, and drinks for all of our attendees. We will issue wristbands that will have to be shown for each activity and for you to receive your food and everything. All of the activities will also be free. We have one donation from the Port Arthur Industrial Group that we received this week in an amount of five thousand dollars, and we've already set up our revenue and expense accounts. We've set up new vendor accounts for the people who will provide bounce houses, a DJ, the three-sixty selfie booth. We have a chart with a list of over-twenty activities, exhibits, and game trucks, laser tag, archery, which Dr. Porter suggested, because there have been questions on some of our STAR tests that deal with archery, and many of our students don't know what that is. So when we were talking about activities, and he mentioned that, we just so happened to reach out to a game truck vendor that also actually provides laser tag and archery. So we're gonna have that, and we want to have activities for kids of our ages, so we'll have soft play zones for children that are five and under. It's kind of like the mini version of a bounce house, where it's like the little ball, what do you call it, the little, I call it a pool of balls, but it's like little, the mini version of the bounce house and the ball thing, yeah, and the little sliding stuff for the kids that are under five. We also are going to utilize the gym for the bounce houses, so that the kids will have a cool place to participate in the bouncing and utilize the girls' gym. We suggested half-court basketball and half-court volleyball to attract our middle school and high school students, face painting, where we invited community groups and school groups to do performances in the common area, and we have confirmation from our marching band and our drill team, and also the Port Arthur Junior Honeybees have committed to performing. We are also going to reach out to other performance groups. Valero is gonna reach out to Tiger Rock Martial Arts. They also have some type of bounce house obstacle course that is supposed to be really great. We're also gonna reach out to the Vietnamese dragon dancers and to see if we can get some Hispanic heritage performers, so that all cultures are represented in the performances. And when the performers come out, that will attract the parents of the performers and the communities who want to see those different types of performances. The main thing that Valero is stressing is that we want to be able to give away backpacks and school supplies at this event by way of raffle. The projected audience is three to four thousand participants, and we're planning for at least a thousand backpacks with school supplies to be raffled off. And also, Valero is donating fuel cards to be raffled off as well. So that is going to be greatly appreciated by whoever.
So, excuse me, anyone can be in the drawing for the fuel cards?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be there.
And we're gonna have the SWAT team truck, the fire truck, Acadian ambulance, paratroopers are mentioned, our NJ ROTC, we asked Chief Fulbright if the kids would have like an opening ceremony where they present the flags and colors. The first responders, like the SWAT truck and ambulance and everything, the idea is for the children to be able to tour inside the ambulance or inside the SWAT truck or on the fire truck to see, you know, what it's like to be that type of first responder. We're also gonna have Life Share Blood Center doing blood drives. The city of Port Arthur has said that they will send their strike team to provide free COVID vaccines. So it's pretty much like just a whole gigantic fun day for the whole community to come out and to enjoy that one last hurrah before the school year starts. And so in your packet, I believe you have the plan thus far, and we're continuing to have meetings so that we can iron out the logistics and secure everything that we need. We've started putting down deposits, putting in requests to put down deposits on these items, and hopefully, we'll have a very good turnout. We're gonna heavily advertise on social media and invite the press to. and invite the press to cover the story before and during the activity. So, we're looking forward to it. We put together a little draft of the flyer advertising the event, and, you know, we're going to give it all we got, and hopefully, the whole community will come out and support.
Thank you, Mrs. Lot, and once again, we want to thank, we want to thank Mrs. Lot, we want to thank Valero, the Port Arthur Industrial Group, along with Carol Hebert. They've been working really, really hard at getting this done. So, it is something that we want to be relaxed for our community. There's so much that has happened over the last two years. So, this is our first time getting back together and just being at ease. And it's going to be a wonderful kickoff. So, we definitely want our board members out there to help us to welcome our community back to school along with our students and parents. And I just want to say thank you to all of our board members for what you do. Your support means so much. And to our executive team and our directors and all of the staff that has worked so hard to get us to this point. You know, some people in the community, when you see them, they'll say, well, you all are resting, you all are resting this summer, you're taking a break. But as you see tonight, we are not resting, and we're on a timetable, we're trying to move to get ready, get ready for August tenth, when our students return. We will celebrate Fourth of July on Monday, July fourth, and the administration building will be closed the remainder of that week. So, we will be closed July first through the eighth, and we will reopen again July eleventh, and that is when we're going to sprint all the way to August the tenth. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Dr. Porter, thank you, Mrs. Lot, and Ms. Davis for all you do. Dr. Getwood, thank you. Minutes, considering the appropriate improvements of the May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two regular and election board meeting and the May twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two special call meeting. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. The minutes for the May twenty-fourth and May seventeenth board meetings have been approved. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and are recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda items by the board president per. It's been moved in second. Can we? Has it moved in second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That means our crew. Consent agenda item. Following items, which are of a routine and are recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda item by the board president per policy BE Local. All of the items of the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussions have been acted upon. Trustees, if you will take a few moments to consider items one through thirteen. If there's no questions, concerns, I'm going to take a motion to approve consent agenda items one through thirteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Trust Barti. Second by trustee Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda items one through thirteen have been approved. Personnel, we've already.
Giving you a list of teachers to be considered.
Dr. Porter?
Give you a list of, board members, you do have the list of teachers to be considered in your packet.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the employment of teachers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The approval of employment of teachers have passed. Okay, considering if appropriate, proposed termination of term contract employee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Vice President Barti, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Narcisse. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The termination of term contract employee is approved. Considering if appropriate, terminate term contract employees. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Vice President Barti, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Narcisse. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Term contract employees have been approved. Information, Dr. Porter?
Average daily enrollment, eight thousand forty-eight. Average daily attendance, ninety point sixteen percent.
Trustees, any questions? If there's no questions, I'll call for an adjournment.
Second, I mean, moved, so moved.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.